Air recording is begun.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Director Phipps, could you please give a roll call?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
I'm sorry. I started all the way at the end. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Still here.
Mayor James?
Here.
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilman Goldsmith? Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we have our agenda here. I do need to amend the agenda. Cornerstone is stuck up in Annapolis testifying, so I thank Mac for doing that on our behalf, but he will not be presenting today. So do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward III, I move that we accept the agenda with the noted amendments.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? All in favor, please. Oh, any discussion?
When we reach down, what do you think?
Oh.
Yes, I believe the 14th of March.
Thank you.
Very much for that update. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully, you all have been able to read the minutes. I do have before if we're going to accept, we're going to accept them individually. So do I have anyone who would like to make a motion for the minutes on the 14th for both the open session and the closed session?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the town council meeting for February 14th, 2023. I move that we approve the closing statement of closed session on February 14th, 2023.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And before we go in for an approval of minutes, I just wanted for the 20th for our budget retreat, just two things that were, that came out on the public agenda. One, it indicated that Ms. Director Harrington was in attendance and she was not. And on this particular one, I do not see an opening and closing time. Director Phipps, can we add those in there should the council read the amended minutes?
Of course, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes as suggested?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to our next part of our agenda, which is Women's History Month proclamation, which March starts tomorrow. So I have asked Councilwoman Bryant Ward if she would read the proclamation for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward III, Town of La Plata proclamation, Women's History Month, March 2023. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by consulting, by constituting significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite the contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued, and in the literature teaching study of American history. Now therefore, we, the council of the Town of La Plata, proclaim March 2023, Women's History Month in the Town of La Plata, and call upon all citizens to observe this month and to celebrate International Women's Day on March 8th, 2022, with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This is signed by the council of the Town of La Plata, Janine E. James, Mayor, James Goldsmith, Councilman, Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, David M. Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, public comment. If anybody would like to speak today, I just ask you that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could limit it to three minutes, that would be appreciated. Do I have anyone who would like to speak today? Right. Next up would be the chief for his monthly report. Hopefully, or I guess it's now weekly report, monthly report. Hopefully, you all have been able to look at that. And council, do you have any questions for Chief Shitter?
I would, again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward IV. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I was curious that the numbers for the hotels somewhat lower than prior months. Is that because of the time of the year?
I think some of it's seasonal. I think some of it too is COVID. A lot of people were being housed there with, for COVID reasons, and I think most of that has subsided.
Okay. And then just, May, thanks for the two training opportunities you've done for the staff. That's outstanding. Thank you.
All right. No problem.
Easy enough. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is the planning report. Director Harrington is not here, but if you have any questions, Mr. Manuel will definitely be able to answer every single one of them. Please, Councilman Jenkins, I would be disappointed if you didn't ask, so.
Question, and I don't know whether it's possible, but are the violations tracked by area or overtime? So they can track whether the season or not, or any location, or is that something to look forward in the future possibly?
It definitely could track it through GIS systems. Just be a new data set that we would have to enter, and then we could, of course, map that through the software, but it's something we could definitely do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next up is Director Stahl. Do you have any questions for Director Stahl?
Madam, I had just one clarification question. Again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward IV. I noticed on your list, again, thanks for the presentation and the hard work. I noticed there's a project, it's 5:25 clocks run, that's been on the list a long time. So what is that? I'm just curious. What is that? I just seen it on the list and I, okay. It's a little, it's further down from my house. No, it's further away from East Patuxent. Yes, correct. Because I just, because I literally walk by there every day, and I'm just curious, what is that? Whenever we get a chance, we can, we talk offline. Thank, no, no. You have nothing else to do. Thank you.
All right.
Director Stahl, can you, do you have any updates on the streetlights for Patuxent Court?
They have been put into the request to Smecko. They met with Charlie Herbert from Smecko, and he said he would take care of it for us. So I believe they've been approved, and we're waiting for Smecko to do the installation.
You have an estimated time? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Director Phipps, Legislative Services. Does anyone have any questions for Director Phipps?
Madam Mayor, I do. Director Phipps, give me a second. Can you tell me about the, the three complex requests that were requested for elected official compensation, payment transactions, and purchasing records?
Yes, so I believe those all started with an FIN code, so they went down to finance. We get these pretty regularly, almost annually, the, as far as the compensation for the employees.
Okay.
That's a pretty normal. The purchasing one also is pretty regular, and the third one was
Payment transaction.
Payment transactions. These are all very normal, regular requests.
Meaning what? When you ask for payment transactions, what are they asking for? Our expenses?
Martha? I'm sorry, I'm putting Martha on the spot because she actually answered these.
Good anything? They essentially request for a specific timeframe, it may be a calendar year, a quarter. The expense is paid or checks outstanding. I believe this particular request was for any open checks, checks not cashed, still on our books. Usually, it's a specific piece of information, and then we can turn it around relatively quickly.
Are these residents?
No, I believe they're probably state reporting agencies that are requesting these, this information. I believe Maryland Open the Books is one of the we get commonly requests from.
Okay, so I didn't see the, the request just had a name, so I wasn't sure. And the purchasing records?
So they were looking for our purchase orders issued. Particularly, this request was from November of 2022 up until present. I believe we have just the recent ARPA purchases were included, and then so we sent that over to them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And one more for Director Phipps.
Yeah, me too. But go ahead. Finish up.
Healthy habitats.
Nice. Healthy habitats.
Healthy habitats. It could include health and wellness for humans, but mainly healthy habitats. It refers to the Birds, Bees, and Trees programs. So Bird City, Maryland, and Tree City, USA, which incidentally, we just achieved our growth award again. And then the Bee City, USA initiative, which we have a coordinator identified. She is just getting geared up on what's required for that.
So this is a newly formed group to combine all of the individuals of those different
Yes, ma'am.
committees to come, okay.
In fact, they'll be meeting together next Friday, March 10th, for the first time. This.
Thank you, Councilman Bryant Ward. That was a question I was going to ask. So this is also for citizen health and safety or health programs as well, or is?
All of it kind of ties in together. I mean, the programs that are going to support our native flora and fauna is also healthy for humans.
I asked for that clarification because I know as the ex-official member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, they've been very interesting, interested in promoting not only walkability but wellness. And so they were, I think we're going to be looking for opportunities to promote that and other resources. I did just a question.
Oh, all of these, yes, Councilman, I'm not sure you want to get me started on this, but all of these tie together in Sustainable Maryland through the health and wellness section of that, and we've dragged the mayor in on that. And yes, we will be dragging Parks and Rec in with us. I mean, not really dragging, but everything connects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Brings us to the auditor's report. That is next. Mr. Manuel?
I will defer to Ms. Larson. I think they, online? Okay. I don't know. We need to let them in to the discussion. So bear with us. There will be on remote.
Hi, this is Karen Tasker.
Well, here's someone.
That, okay. Karen, we can hear you.
Karen, we can hear you very faintly.
Okay, hopefully, we'll get a little better. My name is Karen Tasker. I am an audit.
Karen, we can't hear you. Director Phipps is going to try to see if she can increase your volume. All right, let's try it again.
Hi, this is Karen Tasker. Can you hear better?
No, we can't, we still can't hear you.
Let me see if I can dial in to the number then.
All right, while we're waiting, we just get a little break here.
Karen, can you hear us?
I can now. Thank you.
Outdoor voice.
I'll try and get started. So my name is Karen Tasker. I am an audit manager with Cone Resnick, and we completed your financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2022. I have a short presentation that is similar to what we have provided to the council in the past. We'll see if I can. So does everybody see the slides now?
We can see that.
Okay. So I'm just going to go through basically the auditor's opinion. We issue a report on internal control. The AUC 260, that's communication that's meant to be for those charged with governance, which is essentially covered also by this meeting. I'll do some overview of some items from the financial statements and some future impacts for the town. So this is, shows the first part of our audit opinion. There were significant changes to the format of the opinion this year. If you looked at last year's financial statements, the opinion paragraph was kind of near the bottom, but there were some clarity standards issued during the year. So you can see now the opinion is the very first thing within the auditor's report. And we did have an unmodified opinion this year, same as last year, which is basically means that, you know, throughout the course of our audit, our procedures did not detect any material misstatements within the town's financial statements. The report goes on to talk about some things we do. So the basis for our opinion that we perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And then it has a section with the town's responsibility, which is new this year, that's saying that the town is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statement. And in preparing the financial statement, that you have considered the town's ability to continue for at least a year beyond the report date. Then, within the auditor's responsibility, it talks about our responsibility to, you know, perform the audit, and that we're not necessarily going to detect all misstatements, but we're looking to make sure that we did not see any material misstatements. And then we also assess the town's ability to continue for a year beyond the financial report. And then you do have some required supplementary information, the management discussion and analysis, and some pension information that is included with the financial statement. So we are required to provide a report on that. We don't express any opinions on it, but we do do some limited procedures and make sure that the information within those supplemental items are fairly stated in relation to information that's in the financial statement. Then there's just some general paragraphs about, you know, other reporting requirements that refers to the internal control letter that I mentioned. So this is the other opinion that we report, issue on internal control. So we look at the different controls that the town has in place related to like cash dispersment, cash to seed, things like that. We look to see if there's any weaknesses, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and this report gives the definition of those items. And then, you know, we looked at the compliance, and we did not find any issues with the internal controls for the town. As far as the communication with those charged with governance, we did send a separate letter to the town. And then this slide just highlights some of the bullet points. You know, we didn't note any unusual items, any material items that weren't substantiated by support from the finance department. You know, all significant transactions had been recognized. Anything that was subject to some amount of estimate, those estimates were reasonable and supported. There were, you know, any uncorrected misstatements that we noted were small. They were not material enough to require recommending any adjustments to the financial statements. The one item that we did report there, the difficulties during the audit, just because of turnover within the town personnel, there were delays in being able to complete the audit this year. But, you know, we were able to work through all of those things, and it did receive the information we needed. So just some, highlight some things within the financial statements. I wasn't planning on pulling those up, but these are just some highlights. You know, you have the management discussion and analysis, which is written by the town. It just provides an overview of what happened during the year and provides some explanations where there were some larger variances as compared to budget, and gives some information about the capital assets and the town debt. And then within the financial statements, you have the government-wide financial statements, which picks up all of the funds within the government. And then you have the governmental funds, which has your general fund and some other governmental funds. And then you have your proprietary funds, which are your water and sewer, your stormwater, sanitation. And then some notes which disclose essential information and the other supplemental information that I discussed. Brief overview, the town's net position has increased each of the years. So that's basically your revenues in excess of expenditures. So it's a good trend to have that net position increasing each year. Your capital assets, generally, you will see declines in that each year as the assets depreciate. The reason for the increase last year in 2021 was because of some land that the town had acquired during the year. So that's why that one looks a little unusual, that it was not, you know, declining across the three years. Your long-term debt balances have been decreasing, and that's just attributable to all of the principal payments that are made on those bonds each year. And then, just as, as a best practice, the GFOA recommends, you know, that the town have unassigned balance of not less than two months of expenditures. And that's kind of to say, okay, if all of the revenue stopped for some reason, you would still have some, you know, this unassigned fund balance that supports that. And when we did the calculation of your unassigned balance, you can see that in 2022, you had 13 months of expenditures within that unassigned fund balance. So you are well above the recommended two-month minimum. And it's been pretty consistent over the last three years. This just shows the different components of your fund balance, so whether something is non-spendable that's related to prepaid expenses. You don't have any restricted, the assigned balances are, I believe, the biggest component is your major facility fee that is assigned for specific use, and then the large component being your unassigned balance, which isn't designated for any specific use. Some future governmental accounting standard for statements that are going to become effective in the next couple of years. I won't go through all of the details. These are also listed in the footnotes to the financial statements, but just things to be aware of. You know, public-private partnerships will have some additional reporting requirements if you have those. If you have subscription-based technology, information technology. And then just some things about accounting changes for corrections and uncompensated balances. So those are just things that your auditors will be aware of, the, you know, town treasurer should be aware of as well coming up. The last bullet point there with your American Recovery and Investment Act funding. We thought at this point last year that you would have had a single audit requirement during fiscal year 2022, but the expenditures proceeds under the ARRA funding was not great enough to have required that single audit in 2022. But, you know, we expect that the town will start spending some of those grants and have that requirement during fiscal year 2023. So something to factor in for next year's audit. And that is the end of what I had set aside. Does anybody have any questions that I can try to answer?
Thank you very much, Karen. Appreciate that. And we finally could, we adjusted the volume so we could hear everything that you so we could hear everything that you had to say. I do have one question. You did mention that there was delays in audits because, in the audit. And I think I heard you did not receive the information that you requested to do, to complete, to include in the audit. Is that correct?
Yeah, sorry. We did receive the information that we needed.
You did finally receive it?
Yes, we did, with Martha and I know Corino were helping throughout the process. We weren't able to receive the information. It just took some extra time because of the vacancy in the town treasurer position during most of our audit period.
Thank you. Those ladies did an amazing job. So I am glad to hear that. Counsel, any questions for Karen?
I have one. Karen, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward for Ward Three. You talked about estimates. What type of estimates would be found in a financial statement outside of budgeted numbers?
So when you're doing, for example, your fixed assets, estimating what the useful life of that asset is. How long do you think that car will last or that building will last? Another one is within compensated absences. You know, what is, what is going to be used as far as paid time off?
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward Four. I have a question either for the town treasurer or the town manager. There's a reference on page 121 of the total agenda, which refers to, we recommend, the order recommends the town review the manpower needs for the financial department, determine if additional finance department employees are necessary. Is that something that will be looked at during the current, the preparation for the fiscal '24 budget? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you so much, and we really appreciate your report, and we enjoy working with you. It's not always that easy job, especially when you are working virtually. But the team here did an amazing job. So thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Mayor James. It was a pleasure working with everyone there as well.
Have a good evening. Next up is Heritage Green Special Taxing District with Emily from Munichap. Or Lindsay, or we can do anyone.
Yeah, I would say Lindsay, due to unfortunate circumstances, is available tonight. She was planning to be on a trip, but as would be, she is available virtually. I know we thought Emily was going to carry a large portion of this conversation, but your bond counsel, Lindsay Raider, with Funk and Bolton is also available this evening.
And, and good evening. This is, this is Lindsay. I'm just, I'm going to stay on mute unless you have questions for me because I'm still coughing a lot, so I don't want to keep coughing at you.
Okay. Very good. Great. Well, good evening. Pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Emily Metzler. I'm with Munichap, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the Heritage Green Special Taxing District. It is now the Pine Grove Project. If you see the marketing sign coming down the highway, I'm going to call it Heritage Green for the foreseeable future. That's the way I know it, since 2009. So back in 2009, the town approved a resolution and an ordinance that, among other things, created the special taxing district, authorized the issuance of bonds over multiple series, as well as created a special fund and approved the rate and method of apportionment, which essentially sets special tax rates that are levied on property in the district to repay those future bonds. Since 2009, two things have happened. One, the MWQFA loan was issued. That was issued in December 2009. And then also, the town hired Munichap as the administrator to assist with matters related to the district and to assist the town with any obligations associated with the district as well. So my role is here today as the administrator for the district and to also present the changes that were put forth to the town regarding updates to the project and the special taxing district. Since 2009, the property has changed ownership. It is now owned by D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton has made changes to the development plan through a master site development plan that's been approved by the town. And as part of those changes to the development, they're also requesting that the town amend and make changes to the special taxing district at this time. Those changes include, first, that they would like to have a resolution and ordinance approved. The resolution would make amendments to the special tax methodology, and I'll go over those in just a moment in a little bit more detail. And the ordinance would authorize an increase in the issuance of bonds. I will just clarify and state that we're not asking for authorization to issue any bonds today. We are only asking to increase the amount of bonds that could be issued at any time. We would need to come back to the town prior to the issuance of any bonds. So this is not in any way an introduction or request to issue bonds at this time. The changes to the special tax methodology are reflected in a document that's called the Rate and Method of Apportionment. That document outlines specific methodology and math formulas essentially that work out to determine the rates that are applied to the different land use classes in the district. There are single-family detached units, attached units, multifamily units, and commercial development contemplated. In 2009, we set those rates in the rate and method of apportionment. And since 2009, those rates have increased by 2% per year. Part of the request from the landowner is to reset those rates back to the 2009 rates. So essentially resetting them to the lower rates as they believe it is more marketable for the project and better for the future homeowners at those rates. Those rates do allow for the full repayment of bonds to be issued, so it would not affect the repayment of either the MWQFA loan that's outstanding or the future issuance of bonds. And as administrator, we have run an updated financial analysis with the updated development plan and the new rates to ensure that any bonds that would be issued would be supported by those reset rates. As I mentioned, there's also an ordinance that is being proposed and requested by D.R. Horton that increases the current authorization of a total amount of bonds of $45 million to $65 million. That amount that I just stated does include the outstanding $3 million or so MWQFA loan. Those are the requested changes of the resolution and ordinance that have been put forward and we're introducing here tonight. Are there any specific questions that you would like for me to answer or for Lindsay to answer, since she is also on the line?
Well, thank you, Emily, for being here and providing an overview of what is being requested. I do have two important questions. One, what is the risk to the town? And two, by setting back the rate to the 2009, will, from that point, will it be increased like it had been before to 2% every year until it is paid off? And of course, we want to attract people here to fill those homes. So what would the cost be to? And you don't have to be very specific, but, you know, cost to the new homeowners that will be paying above and beyond the real estate taxes, the Charles County taxes and the La Plata taxes. They will have an added tax on that. So that's what I'm concerned about, the town and the residents. If you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Understood. Good questions. Very important risks that we do want to make sure that we consider. So your first question is regarding risks to the town. And I will note that the town supports the MWQFA loan behind the special taxes. That $3 million is well over secured and has a primary repayment from the special taxes. No other bonds can be issued on parity, meaning that the MWQFA loan is always paid first. And there are more than sufficient special tax revenues from the development that would go to pay that MWQFA loan. So future bonds would not be backed or are not contemplated to be backed by the town. They are repaid purely from the special taxes on the development. That means that there is no risk to the town and no obligation to the town to support any future bonds.
Thank you.
The second question is related to the special tax rates. And just to work backwards, the rate in 2009 and the rate that we're asking to reset the rates to on a single-family detached home would be $1,200 a year. That's about $100 a month. We did work very closely with D.R. Horton and their marketing team to evaluate the overall tax burden, including town, county, state, and the special tax, to ensure that that level of overall taxes would be marketable. It is not in their advantage to overburden these homes because ultimately then a homeowner would not want to purchase a home in their development, and therefore their sales would go down. So we did work very closely, and that is a reason why they're asking to reset the rates to ensure that they fit within their marketability levels. The rate increasing from 2% on from 2009 to today is over $2,000 per household. And that's why they're asking to reset it. Now, home values do increase over time, and that's why the rates increase, just very similar to appreciation in home values. It's intended to represent that net change in values over time. And, you know, as administrator, we administer over 200 projects across the country, and that's a very standard increase in those rates that we implement.
And is it a very standard request to roll it back to a certain year?
We have had that on a handful of districts. I will say it's not normally the case because there's also not normally a pause from 2009 until today that, you know, we're issuing the bonds. Generally, we see that we have the approvals in place, and we issue the bonds within the next year. But just given the timing of when we first went through the approvals, we're back here today.
Thank you. Counsel?
So Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward Three. So we're resetting the rates back to 2009 because basically the development changed ownership and there has been no building, no progress. So now that they're starting to build, we won't have to revisit this and reset the bond, the rates back again.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Matt. Thank you. My name is Matt Traulder, Councilman for Ward Two. If this were, like, scrap the 2019 rates, if this were being built today, what would the rate be if this was presented for the first time? Does that make sense? So we've got an increase as we're 2% every year from 2019 forward.
2009.
Excuse me, 2009.
Yeah, so.
So if, if this were being done today, I mean, can we compare the tax burden on a new resident today versus 2009?
I think I understand your question to be, if the rates were increasing since 2009, and so essentially the rate would be around $2,000, are you asking how that $2,000 plus today's other tax overall equates?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you asking, if I, if I think you're asking, if they went in today and asked for a rate, disregard of everything else. Today, they came to you and they said, give us a rate. What rate would you give them? And then what rate are they asking to roll back to 2009?
We're implementing other districts locally around $1,200 per unit.
Okay. So it's, it's very comparable.
Very comparable.
So, okay, so you're saying there's not really a difference between 2009 and today's rate?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just the 2% that came in.
Correct.
Every. They took $2,000 versus $12,000.
I think the question he's asking is, what was the marketing rate in 2009? That was around $1,200. What is the marketing rate for comparable districts today, which is also $1,200? We don't really see a huge variance in that starting rate. I've been implementing districts since 2008 where the starting rate is almost always $1,200 as the starting point.
And it's just that because they didn't receive the bonds in 2009, the contract says every year you get a 2% increase. They've never used that. And so they come here today, ready to use the bonds, and now they've accrued all of that 2% every year. So that's why it would be over $2,000.
Right. And I understand where you're going. Essentially, you're saying, okay, well, time value of money, those rates have changed over time. So why is it not palatable to now start at the $2,000? Or why is the, why is that starting rate marketable in 2009? Also, the starting rate that's also marketable today? And really, the reason is, is that $100 a month is less of a sticker shock just as a number, even comparatively to $2,000 today, regardless of the fact that the, we've all can get comfortable with the fact that the economy and inflation has occurred since then. It's just a number that I have seen a homeowner who's generally emotionally buying a house be able to understand and feel comfortable with relative to a number that feels higher.
And that's, you know, that, that's among different levels of marketing and making sure people understand what they're buying.
Exactly.
You know, truth in advertising, everything else. But, so I appreciate that. Is there, I mean, part of this that I'm having a hard time with is that it's anticipated, that if things don't get built, it will increase. There wasn't a cap in place, you know what I mean, from the 2% each year? Have we done this before with a special taxing district, like, reset for any reason, Mr. Manuel, or anybody? No?
You've never done a special taxing district.
So, okay. I think I have another couple of questions, but I'm going to wait, see if they're asked in a better way by colleagues. Thank you.
Emily, do you want to address?
Thank you, Dave Jenkins, Councilmember, Ward Four. This MWQFA bond, what is the status of that today? I mean, is it, has it been paid off? Is it being, I'm still kind of confused what that is and what?
Sure.
And then what's the risk to us in terms of our debt limit or our ability to borrow more funds for something else?
So that's a loan that was issued initially. It's different from a bond that would be issued out into the market. That originally was around $3 million. It has been paid every year by special taxes. The town has not had to pay any of the debt service on that. So the debt service on the loan is first paid from the special taxes. And then to the extent the special taxes are not paid, then it's paid by the town. The special taxes have been there from the undeveloped property, paying their special tax bill to pay that loan. There are, that loan is paid off in 2031. There's only $1.6 million remaining to repay that.
And that's, so if I hear you right, it's being paid by, in essence, D.R. Horton's paying.
Pro-rata because the town had, it was basically Willow Lane Pump Station. So the town, we sort of abandoned one pump station to send the flow through to this. So the town does pay a portion of that because the town was responsible for some of that flow that was, and then, of course, Heritage Green.
Okay.
It was future flow.
Okay. All right.
This is the fact that we shifted so much residential flow into the Willow Lane Pump Station. The town picked up 30% of the debt. The special taxing district has 70% of that debt. So here, the town does pick up 30% of that based on the original agreement between Heritage Green and the town. But it was a very low.
Yes, very low.
Okay.
Simulance package, and the town took, it was a huge benefit for the town to do this, and it really worked out extremely well.
Is it anticipated that, that the payees will continue to pay what they're paying?
Correct.
There won't be any additional burden on, on the town?
That's correct. The agreement will remain as is.
And then, this is probably getting down on the weeds, but I'll wait till later on. This is a, probably not going to be a fair question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. In a worst scenario, and let's say the developer goes belly up, what happens to that money in the infrastructure?
The bonds are.
My real question is, does the town hold the bag for that?
They, you do not. You are not morally obligated to repay any future issued bonds. They, you do not. You are not morally obligated to repay any future issued bonds.
Well, morally obligated, but whoa, again, worst case scenario. Let's say there's, there's water lines or sewer lines out there and nobody's out there. Somebody has to pay for them and somebody has to maintain them.
So the bonds that are issued are, the funds are put into a trust estate and those funds can be used to build the infrastructure and they're there to complete the infrastructure. The special tax is a lien on the land. If the developer goes belly up, then that land goes into a tax foreclosure the same way your real estate taxes do. And the bondholders that purchase these bonds will step in and take ownership of the bonds. And, and whoever purchases the land in the foreclosure process would be, would take ownership of the land and the improvements.
So again, there's no really quote risk for the town and the town residents?
Correct.
How about the folks who live out there, who have a house out there and what happens to them?
Their rates do not change. Once these rates are set, that is the rate that that homeowner pays. Their rate does not change if the developer who owns any undeveloped land goes belly up.
Except for the annual 2% increase.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Except for, the rate doesn't change except for the annual 2% increase.
That's what I was gonna ask. I was gonna say, so that the rate doesn't change except for the annual 2%. So if they start off at 1,600, next year it will be 1,600 plus the 2%.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's, that was the clarification because I thought, well, you get in early, get low. Get in cheap.
That's correct. The methodology once established does not change. That methodology being the rates.
Yes.
In the rate and method, amended rate and method of apportionment, increasing at 2% per year.
So that rate, as you just said, it will not change. They're not going to say, well, I want to increase it 5%.
Correct. Once a homeowner, they cannot, the, to make changes to the special tax, you must be a landowner. And so to the extent they sell the, which is why they can submit the request now and petition as a landowner. But to the extent they sell homes, those homeowners now have a say if they ever want to make a change.
Okay, right.
And once you have a number of landowners or homeowners, it would be very difficult to make a change to the rate and method because you'd have to meet certain statutory requirements in terms of the number of property owners requesting the change. And also, again, just the financed improvements do not serve as collateral for any issued bonds. And so if a particular landowner doesn't pay the special taxes assessed against that property and the property goes to tax sale, whoever buys the, the property out of the tax sale is responsible for the special taxes going forward. And it is the bondholders, except in the case of the MWQFA note. Any other bonds that the town issues, the bondholder takes the risk that the collected special taxes will not be sufficient to cover debt service on the bonds. The town does not have to come out of pocket to pay any deficiency in the special taxes, except with regard to the MWQFA note. But as noted, I believe that matures in the year 2030. And as of right now, there's only 1.6 million and change outstanding.
Right. Thank you very much for that clarification. Any other questions?
Go ahead. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I remember the last time from Ms. Raiders' presentation, but I can't remember the exact answer. So as it stands now, is the 12, let's just call it $1,200, I know it's about two if you're just buying in. But does that annual tax continue on infinity as far as this homeowner? How long does that take place?
The earlier of the repayment of the bonds are 30 years.
Okay.
For each series of bonds.
Okay. And then my second question.
Each series can have a 30-year term.
Okay. And then my second question was, if we're going to reset it back to the 2009 rates, are we still going to include the 2% increase annually?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify quickly, so the, the taxes include county taxes and town? Does that, this is probably not, I asked it anyway, does it include the school impact fee that they're charged?
The special taxes do not include the impact fee. That's separate.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You did a wonderful job for being in person. Thank you, Lindsay, for being there. I, I, sorry that you didn't take your little trip, but it's always a pleasure to see you.
Well, thank you. What can you do? You get COVID and.
You know what? You just wanted to come to this meeting. So thank you very much for that.
Would you like us to both stick around for the introduction of the legislation or?
Oh, yes. It's quite the party. So please stay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the service contract for potable water storage tank maintenance. Director Stahl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I bring before you tonight the, the service and maintenance agreement for the asset management for our water storage towers. We have three aerial storage towers, a 250,000 gallon tower up at Rosewick, a 750,000 gallon water storage, elevated water storage tower at Dorchester. We have a 300,000 gallon elevated storage tower at Will's Park. And we have a 750,000 gallon surface tower at Tillman Lake. So we have four towers. We have the maintenance requirements that we're required to do with annual inspections and all through the state of Maryland. We also painted the towers, starting in 2008, we painted Rosewick in 2008. We painted Dorchester in 2009 and we painted Will's Park in 2010. So we are coming up on relatively 15 years, which is the timeframe with which you would want to go back in and repaint the towers. As you'll notice from them, they are starting to show some, some fading and some need of repainting. So what we, we looked at whether or not we were going to go off and start maintaining the towers by ourselves. And so we were always doing the towers by ourselves. Go ahead. The, the one at, at Tillman Lake is a ground storage. It's not an elevated water storage tower. And it's not something that we paint. It is actually a glass lined steel tank that sits there. It's that storage tank right there on the corner when you go in. And so it, it doesn't require painting and, and maintenance, but it does require inspection. So it is part of the agreement from the inspection process. What we started looking at was the cost in the last, when we painted the last tank at Will's Park 15 years ago or 2010, it was over $200,000 to repaint that tank. Our estimates were that it was going to cost us a quarter million for each one of the tanks. When, when I started looking at this, I was very worried about the capital needs as far as water and sewer are, as you know, we're, we've got a lot of water and sewer capital expenses coming up and in the future as well. And so I wanted to really look at whether or not we utilize a maintenance agreement with a tower maintenance company to come in and just take over the actual maintenance and inspections for us and annualize it as an expense. And so I, I bring before you tonight this contract that is an annual contract. It's a 10-year deal, but it's a $79,000 per year expense that would be expensed as part of the budget. It will not require any major capital outlays other than that on an annual basis. Southern Corrosion will take care of all inspections. They will paint all three of the water towers. And they will take care of any maintenance necessary with respect to those towers. We felt from an operational standpoint that it was better for us not to go and have huge capital outlays because we already have a plan and how we're going to pay for that growth over at the wastewater treatment plant, all of those other things. And we really, the inspector that we had used for many years, Doug DeClerc, who came out of Pennsylvania, we originally hired him through MES. And then we hired him as an individual, has retired. And so we were looking for an inspection service. And when we started comparing this out there in, in the industry, we felt this was probably the better way to go. And it didn't require a huge capital outlay for us to come in and paint the towers ourselves and try to go through all of that. What we did was we started looking for the different contractors. We're all very familiar with Southern Corrosion. They're a very reputable firm. And so we've really felt very good about going forward. We also were able to, they just had a bid from Tawny Town. And so we were able to piggyback on Tawny Town's rates. And we were actually, we're able to get a better rate because we have more storage than Tawny Town. So this is a little bit better rate than Tawny Town because of the fact that we have more storage than what Tawny Town has. Two towers, we actually have three. So what I bring before you tonight is the $79,943 per year. And it would increase annually by the cost of CPI. I believe it's the right way to go for our maintenance. And some of you may know Southern Corrosion from some of the MML conferences. They are a very reputable firm. They're a very good firm to deal with. And we'd like to have them take over our tower maintenance.
I spoke with them at MML. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Since this is an opportunity, I see for us to maybe redesign our water towers to enhance them and make them spectacular. They're nice, but we can make it spectacular. Is that something that they could do?
We certainly could look at that. I think the contract was based on a single color, not multi-colors. But it did include the town logo and the town of La Plata writing on the tank. So each of that would be redone. We could certainly explore that as an option in that situation. And if we'd like to change, I certainly could bring it to the design review board if that's what would be. If I'm not mistaken, we actually took the original blue color back in 2000. Didn't we, Michelle? We took it in 2008 because it was one of the very first things.
Yeah.
That I did. We, we actually came in because originally the towers were a light blue in color. And we decided through the design review board to go with the La Plata blue and to put the town logo and write the town of La Plata on the towers. So that's why that's on each one of the towers and the color.
You know, being Maryland's first bird city, I mean, I could, I could see a bird up there. I mean, we got it. We, we've got really impressed people with that. So. Questions? We are Maryland's first bird city. We are. You weren't talking about, I thought you were talking about painting the inside of the water.
One of the towers and that I know of today, once they do the final inspections up at Rosewick will require some internal painting as well. So there will be some internal painting at, at Rosewick Tower. I believe, I can look back here, I believe it's in year two or year three where that.
So how much do we typically spend on the tower maintenance annually? You're saying that the $79,000 would do the maintenance and the.
And the painting.
Painting. How much now with, outside of this contract, are we spending on maintenance for the water towers?
On an annual basis, it's been very little, probably about $5,000 a year. We always have to hire a company to come in and do the inspections for us. We have to hire climbers to go up in the tank. We have had to have an underground, I mean, excuse me, an underwater camera system go in and to actually do the tank inspection. We've gone up, for instance, and we put mixers in Dorchester Tower and Will's Park Tower. So we actually have internal mixers because we found that we were getting stagnant levels of water in those. You, you end up with a cone of depression. And so when I was running some tests on that, we found the cone of depression in there. And what was happening was the chlorine residual in the rest of the tank would go away. So we noticed it when we had a fire in town, they pulled a large amount of water out of Dorchester Tower. And when I went in and did a chlorine residual test, we noticed that the chlorine levels had dropped way down. So we put mixers, but I would say on average, probably anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000 a piece on annual maintenance. But when you have to go in and repaint each one of the tanks, we figured we were going to probably spend about a quarter million dollars repainting each one of the tanks. And that's, that's a job.
So, so we're not, so it's not the maintenance that we're actually saving on. It's the fact that we have to repaint it. And if we have to repaint it once, we're looking at a quarter of a million dollars for each tank, each of the three.
That's right.
Each of the three. So the 79,000 over.
That's why we built this in. We could have done it where we spent, if you remember, I actually put an ARPA request in that to repaint the tanks. And so I did have an ARPA request in. And of course, with all of the other needs in town, that one was one that wasn't met. But I am concerned about the amount of money that we're having to put out in capital expenditures. And this was a way to not have to do that. We could literally put together an annual cost, an annual maintenance cost, and that's what we're doing here.
Okay, one last question. How, I saw the, the schedule. How often do we have to repaint the inside of the tanks?
It should be about every 15 years as well.
15 years.
Yes, ma'am. The exterior and the interior. The interior could be even less. It's, it's not exposed to oxygen. And so a lot of times, as long as it's below the water surface, we don't have as much degradation there like you would on the outside of the tank. But it is important. These are major investments. These are multimillion dollar investments for the town. And it's important to keep them maintained.
I understand. I understand the maintenance, but we're not actually paying for the maintenance. The 79,000 is to offset the cost to do the internal painting. If we're only.
And exterior, both internal and exterior. All of them will be painted externally.
But the maintenance, we're only spending $5,000 to $20,000 a year per tank. That, that really doesn't cover the maintenance cost.
It's just, what happens is it takes care of cleaning the inside of the tank. If there's algae buildup on the inside of the tank, they will come in, drain the tank, clean the interior of the tank. They will do maintenance on the inside. There will be, generally speaking, you, you'll notice some rusting at the seams where we'll have to go in and do some maintenance like that. As I say, we did repaint the interior in 2010 of the Will's Park Tower. Interestingly enough, the tower at Dorchester, from what I saw from the pictures, you know, below the water surface is actually in good shape. The probably the one that I noticed had the most interior damage was Rosewick Tower, which is our newest tower. That was actually built in 2008. So that one's going to need interior work in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Director Stahl. 79,000 per year, 10 years, 790,000. You just stated that if we were to repaint them individually, 250,000, that's 750,000. But that, that, and then you said on the low end, $5,000 a year for interior maintenance. This sounds like a pretty good deal if you do the math.
It is. And they're getting an economy of scale because they're coming in and they're repainting all three of them in one, at one time. They'll go from one tower to the next tower to the next tower. And so they're, they're going to get some economy of scale out of doing all three of them together. So that's why they wanted to do them all three at the beginning. But they're going to have a large capital outlay for that. And, you know, they'll recapture that over the life of the contract. But here again, we were looking at this as a means to preserve our capital for these other projects that we have. I, I will be coming to you quite a lot with different projects and I'm well aware of that. And this is just one of the ways we were trying to preserve capital.
Thank you. Any other questions on this topic? Go ahead.
Director Stahl, I saw that they have a kind of a, a line here about emergency service during the entire period that they're going to supply as well. They said they guarantee a 24-hour response. a line here about emergency service during the entire period that they're going to supply as well. They say they guarantee a twenty-four hour response time. I mean, of course, that doesn't abdicate our responsibility to residents with what we can do already. Is twenty-four hours sufficient in this type of emergency scenario?
Generally, yes. If we have a problem with a tower, the first thing I will do is isolate the tower. So we we can go in, we have valving in there that we can go in and isolate the tower. My assumption, and I will tell you that the town had a major water tower problem during the tornado. One of our towers was taken down completely. And when it went down, the water was just spewing out of the ground. And so we ran over and luckily, the valving in the ground held tight. And so they were able to turn that off. And within ten hours after the tornado went through, La Plata restored water service to the town. So we were actually very, very capable of doing those type of restorations. But in most cases with a water tower, it wouldn't be all three of them at the same time. And because we have such a large percentage of our water above ground, we currently have two point one million gallons above ground. We use about eight hundred thousand a day. So we do keep plenty of storage above ground. And so even having, for instance, emergency generators at our wells sometimes, you know, is not as necessary at each one of our wells. Because the bottom line is, even if the power goes out throughout the whole town, we have at least two days of water supply. And there just hasn't been a time where Smecko has not restored our power within, you know, five to eight, five to eight hours in most instances. So we do have backup at three of our wells. But we really, other than testing them, we really just haven't had a need to utilize it. So yes, generally speaking, we felt comfortable with twenty-four hour response time if there was a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That brings us down to legislation, Resolution twenty-three dash zero eight for introduction.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, this is for introduction this evening, modification of special tax taxes imposed in the Heritage Green Special Taxing District and related matters for introduction. A resolution concerning modification of the special taxes imposed in the Heritage Green Special Taxing District and related matters for the purpose of supplementing and amending Resolution zero nine dash eight adopted by the Council of the Town of La Plata on September twenty-second, two thousand nine, and effective on September twenty-second, two thousand nine in order to approve and adopt and amend and re-statement of the two thousand nine rate and method identified herein in order to reset certain components of the methodology by which special taxes are imposed on certain classes of property in the Heritage Green Tax Special Taxing District and to make certain other modifications provided for with therein, making certain findings and determinations, providing for rules of construction with regard to Resolution zero nine dash eight as supplemented and amended and generally providing for matters relating to such special taxes.
Thank you very much. We will see this again since it is for introduction. I know that we're trying to keep the resolution and ordinances together. Any questions on this for council? All right.
This will correct, just to clarify case. So this is introduction. There'll be a public hearing.
Not on the resolution.
Oh, resolution.
Yes.
No way.
We actually do have to do a public hearing.
Yeah.
On the ordinance?
On both the resolution and the ordinance, and those public hearings are mandated by the Special Taxing District Act, not by your charter or your rules of procedure.
Thank you for that clarification. So we will do the public hearings together.
So that would then what it has to be, what, two weeks notification and the papers and all that requirement? Right, okay.
Whatever.
Yeah, I believe our schedule will bring it back to you for public hearing on the twenty-eighth of March.
All right. Any other comments on this one? That brings us to ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight.
Yes, Madam Mayor, for introduction again, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Increasing to sixty-five million dollars, the aggregate principal amount of the special tax obligation authorized to be issued by ordinance zero nine dash fifteen with respect to the Heritage Green Special Taxing District and related matters. An ordinance concerning increasing to sixty-five million dollars, the aggregate principal amount of the special tax obligation authorized to be issued by ordinance zero nine dash fifteen with respect to the Heritage Green Special Taxing District, excuse me, and related matters for the purpose of supplementing and amending ordinance zero nine dash fifteen passed by the Council of the Town of La Plata on September twenty-second, two thousand nine, and effective on October eighth, two thousand nine, in order to increase the maximum aggregate principal amount of the special tax obligation as defined in ordinance zero nine dash fifteen, authorized to be issued with respect to the Heritage Green Special Taxing District to sixty-five million dollars thereby in effect, increasing the maximum maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds identified in ordinance zero nine dash fifteen to be issued to sixty-one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and giving effect to the prior issuance of the MWQFA note identified in ordinance zero nine dash fifteen, making certain findings and determinations, providing for a single identified official to act in certain circumstances provided for in ordinance zero nine dash fifteen, providing that the chief executive officer, as identified herein of Town of La Plata, the town, by executive order, may authorize any town official or employee to impress or affix and attest to the town seal on any bonds or any other agreements, documents, or instruments provided for and or contemplated by ordinance zero nine dash fifteen, providing for rules of construction with regard to ordinance zero nine dash fifteen as supplemented and amended and generally provided for matters relating to the bonds.
You did a great job. That's the longest I've heard you speak in any meeting. Do we have any questions from council on this? It's for introduction only.
I understand. Madam Mayor, I just have one question. Should the three point seven five one million not be included in the calculations in that ordinance? Because it is.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
If I may address that.
Sure.
It is technically because the original ordinance authorized up to forty-five million dollars of what were defined as special tax obligations. And the special tax obligations were separately defined to consist of the MWQFA note and the bonds. And so this, we are increasing from forty-five million to sixty-five million dollars the total amount of the authorized special tax obligations. And as this indicates, that in effect, by doing that, we are authorizing up to sixty-one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars of bonds to be issued. And we arrive at that number by deducting the three million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollar MWQFA note that was already issued from the total of sixty-five million.
Okay.
So it does, the the ordinance does actually address that and take account of the MWQFA note.
Okay.
She she said the ordinance does address it, but I don't see the three million in the ordinance. I only see going from sixty-five from and just saying, and we're doing sixty-one million is what we're increasing it by.
Yeah.
Well, that's only in the title, Councilwoman. And and in the title, it does say thereby in effect, increasing the maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds to be issued to the sixty-one million, two forty-eight, four hundred, after giving effect to the prior issuance of the MWQFA note. Within the ordinance itself, in multiple sections, particularly on page seven, there are explanations that by undertaking these amendments, we are taking into account the fact that the MWQFA note was already issued in that amount of three million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay, I do see that as in paragraph E on page seven.
And also in paragraph D on that same page just above there.
Is it?
And if you look further in section three on that same page in A, it describes that the fact that special, if if the ordinance is passed, the term special tax obligations will be construed to to refer to both the MWQFA note as issued in the amount of three million, seven fifty-one, six hundred and any bonds issued in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed the sixty-one million, two four hundred, forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
And that's fine. I just thought that it would be introduced in the the initial paragraph, the for the purpose of statement. But if you, if it's fine being in the back, then no problem.
And Lindsay, also, it's calling it Heritage Green Special Taxing District. The people that are buying the homes are buying Pine Grove. Do we need to change that or for the, is it deeded as Heritage Green?
It, we specifically did not change the name because the the name of the Special Taxing District was assigned to it when it was created in two thousand and nine. And in fact, the special tax disclosures that are being given to potential home buyers are, you know, identified as the Heritage Green Special Taxing District. But there are also references to the Pine Grove project. So I think it is made very clear to anyone who is looking to purchase within the district that the Special Taxing District has one name, but the project itself has another.
As long as I understand.
Yeah.
That, did you have a question?
I just had a question. On page two twenty-seven, actually, it's line two thirty-four. It's in, it's all in caps, the long paragraph, but toward the end, it says, the only funds the town will be obligated to use to make payment on the bonds will be those that result from special taxes levied or imposed and or collected from property located in the district or other monies made available. I I don't understand that paragraph.
So the special taxes are deposited in a special fund when they are collective. And so to the extent there are any investment earnings on the fund that contains the special taxes, those investment earnings can be applied against the debt service payments. Also, it is frequently the case when special tax, when special taxing district bonds are issued that part of the original proceeds of the bonds are used to establish a debt service reserve fund. It's not always the case, but it is often the case. And that debt service reserve fund stays there through the life of the bonds and is often sized to cover approximately one year's debt service. And so what this is saying is that the bonds are not backed by the pledge, the town's pledge of its full faith and credit, that the bonds are only payable from the special taxes or any reserves or investment income on funds that are then, you know, available to be applied to the, to payment of the debt service. And that is, these these bonds are a certain type of revenue bond. And that is very common with revenue bonds to either establish a debt service reserve and use investment earnings to pay a portion of the debt service.
I guess I'm just confused by the term. It says the town will be obligated to use or make payment on the bonds. I I'm just confused by that. I thought we
Yes, please.
There's no risk for us, but yet it says we're going to pay something.
Well, but it says it's only from the special taxes or any reserves or investment earnings.
Lindsay, do you mind if I address and try? This is Emily. Okay, that language is bolded to draw attention to the fact that the town is not required in any way to use any funds in any of your other funds. The only fund that you must draw upon and you're obligated to transfer money from that fund that you hold and to pay the debt services, the special fund. And the only money that goes into the special fund are the special taxes. So it is essentially saying that the town's obligation is to help us transfer that money to the trustee to pay the debt service, but that is the only money that the town is required to use.
Okay, again, I just wish, and this is just an editorial observation. I wish it was written in English because folks are not going to understand this.
Well, to the attorneys it is, and that's the only English they need to know.
But but again, when we advertise for the public hearing, it's going to be hard. And I'll just leave it.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Next on the agenda is Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine for introduction and consideration of adoption.
May I ask?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you said.
Go ahead.
Oops, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Do you take a vote to introduce after you discuss all the legislation? Or do you need to take a vote to introduce specifically with regard to each piece?
Yeah, I think our practice is not to take a vote that it's being introduced. Now, if it's in, be in the best interest to take a vote, I think we could entertain that.
Or a consensus to move forward.
Typically, we do not take a vote in these, the introduction of legislation.
Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. It's your call, Mr. Manuel, what you would like to do.
Lindsay, are we good with that?
If if that is your standard practice with legislation, yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine for introduction and consideration for adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, for you potable water storage tank maintenance. A resolution concerning potable water storage tank maintenance for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the maintenance of the town's potable water storage tanks and all matters related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine as presented?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Brian Ward, Ward three, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine, potable water, water storage tank maintenance.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to our commission reports. Councilman Trolinger.
No report.
All right, Councilwoman Brian Ward.
I reported earlier.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins.
No report at this time.
All right. Well, that good. That leaves me all that extra time to go for my report. Exciting news today. We did do the ribbon cutting for Panda Express, so they are official. And they were very excited to have the county, the town, and the Chamber of Commerce there to welcome them. We have Planet Fitness is having a ribbon cutting next week. They did a soft opening last week, last Monday, and they have been quite busy. I have it on good authority. My husband goes there. They and we have today, the Charles reopened under new ownership. They have four new owners. They are doing dinners only to begin with for, they said for the next couple of weeks, and then they're going to introduce lunch. And then they're going to do brunch. So their menu is very nice. The food was delicious. So if you have the opportunity to stop on by, please do. And there's a, the bar area is going to be some pub food, but you can get the regular menu there. Or you can have a little bit more of a fine dining experience in the interior. And they will actually, after hours when the market closes, if you so desire to have a party of twelve, there is a private room back there where you get the chef to yourself. And it's it's a lovely table back there. So they are opened. Forage Dog Barkery opened over the weekend. They had their ribbon cutting and Councilman Trolinger was there as well. What a unique little shop. And everything is homemade. Your dog would be very spoiled, from cakes to donuts to treats to food, dog food. Someone had asked if vets there and to little trinkets and treats there. And if you go in on Saturday, it's a buy one. And if you go in on Saturday, it's a buy one for your dog. You get to, uh, it was a pumpkin whip, and then you get a frappuccino. So that's not a dog frappuccino, it's a bottled frappuccino. So that, that's very good. Um, upcoming events are, Colleen, uh, special events coordinator is very busy getting ready for uh Easter coming up. Uh, it's ice cream with the Easter bunny, their concerts. She's booked the concerts for um the summer session, and it sounds that fantastic. You have some new groups coming in as well. Um, so we are busy. Uh, and uh on Thursday, we are going up, some of us are going up to Annapolis to attend the South, Southern Maryland Legislative um reception, so we can make sure that we keep in contact with our delegates and our state senator and those that, that give us money so that we can make this town even better. With that said, that's the end of my report, but we do have a reason to go into closed session pursuant to the statutory authority, State Government Article, Chapter three dash three oh five B seven, for the purpose of consulting with council to obtain legal advice. It's to obtain legal advice to a memorandum of understanding for the La Plata Police Department. Uh, I make a motion that we do go into closed session based on this. Do I have a, uh, we're going to do roll call. Um, any, when I ask, it's either a yea or nay uh to go into closed session. Councilman Trol, yes?
We need a second to the motion.
Okay. That's what I thought, but then I thought again. All right. Uh, Councilman Trolinger, it's late.
Um, yay.
All right, he's yea.
Seconded.
And seconded yea. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yea. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James is a yea as well. Thank you very much for attending. This session has been adjourned. Seven thirty two.